Okay, it's 6:30. I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Oregon School District Board of Education. It's our regular meeting. Today is Monday, February 8th, 2021, and the board is meeting in person at the Innovation Center, first time since last March. Kevin Maring is appearing remotely with permission of the President. Could you call the roll?
Ms. Garrison? Mr. Maring?
Present.
Ms. Flanagan?
Yeah.
Mr. Pankrits?
Present.
Ms. Bijak?
Yeah.
Mr. LeBrun?
Here.
Mr. Zak?
Present. Board has a quorum, and Ms. Garrison had indicated to me that she would be unavailable tonight. She let me know that a couple of months ago that this would be a meeting that she would miss if she was excused from the President. I approve that the meeting has been appropriately noticed pursuant to Wisconsin Open Meetings Law, and a copy of that notice will be with Ms. Heights if anyone wants to inspect that. The agenda tonight has our standard items. We'll have action items with respect to the certification or designation of Worth Woods as a school forest, discussion about participation in high school fall and spring athletic competitions, committee reports, and then information items, a report from board members on the WASP convention and administrators, and then our reopening phase restart report from Dr. Bergstrom. That's the motion or the agenda as posted. I need a motion to approve that agenda as posted.
I'll move approval of the agenda.
We have a motion on the second to approve the agenda. Could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Flanagan?
Yeah.
Ms. Bijak?
Yeah.
Mr. Maring?
Yes.
Mr. Pankrits?
Yeah.
Mr. LeBrun?
Yes.
Mr. Zak?
Yes, we have an agenda. Kevin, can you hear us okay?
Perfectly.
Okay, good. First item on the agenda is consent calendar. Is there any item on the consent calendar that any board member wishes to have removed? Seeing none, I take a motion to approve the items on the consent calendar.
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. LeBrun. I would note that we have a number of donations tonight. Sarah Tomaschovic, $500 donation for Games for Family Meal Bags. David and Heather Jackson, $250 donation to the middle school. Brooklyn Recreation, $500 gift cards to Walmart and Bills for families in need at Brooklyn. We have ACE Team Scholarship donations from Brad Ashmore, Carrie Majewski, and Leslie Bergstrom, and then a $2,000 donation from Edward Ferguson for the Oregon High School Band Program. So we thank them for their generosity to the district. Could you call the roll on the items on the consent calendar?
Mr. Pankrits?
Yeah.
Mr. LeBrun?
Yes.
Mr. Maring?
Yes.
Ms. Flanagan?
Yeah.
Ms. Bijak?
Yeah.
Mr. Zak?
Yes, motion carries items on the consent calendar are approved. Item B on the agenda, information. Number one is comments from the public regarding agenda items. We have a special treat tonight, folks. We have two of our students here, and I think they're going to read us their poems, which they've been honored, and Dr. Bergstrom's going to introduce them.
I am. We're so excited to have them here with us tonight. They entered submissions into the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Madison Alumni Chapter Creative Writing Contest. And our two students who put the entries into the contest, Sanaya Jackson, a seventh grader who presented or who posted her submission under the spoken word category, and William Mayo, an eighth grader who submitted a work of poetry. And so they are both here to share their submissions with us tonight. We're proud of both of them, the fact that they did some really great work, entered it into the contest. And I believe Sanaya even won a prize for her submission. But we're proud of both students, and we'd like them both to be here tonight and share with us what they created. So first, we'll have William Mayo, an eighth grader from our middle school, come up to the computer and share his poem with us, which is called "I Am Just Like You."
Thanks, William.
I am just like you. I am just like you. You don't have to stare. Don't look at me like I just turned blue. We all break the same fear. You shouldn't care what we do. Lots of people won't hurt you. I know, have that history together. It doesn't matter what you tell them. We were taught to be treated as equals. History doesn't have us equal. We can deal what's right and avoid a fight. Everybody wants to have equality. Don't try to say people aren't too lucky. It's yellow. Don't face us on what you see like this stuff on TV. Don't look at me with disgust. Don't separate like we have the flu. Because I'm just like you. Thank you.
Craig, anybody? Everybody, we have a question for you. How long did it take you to write that? That looks really good. Thank you.
Thank you, William. And now we will have Sanaya Jackson. She is doing a spoken word poem called "Me, Mine, and Ours." Can I use this on you?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, you just got to talk a little bit louder, okay?
Good enough. You like my melanin in the glow of my skin, but you don't like me. You like my perfect yet frizzy curls and my beautiful braids, but you don't like me. You like my culture, my music, and my clothes, but again, you don't like me. I love my skin, my hair, and my soul because it makes me feel different, not plain. Are you afraid or jealous when you see me, our handsome dark-skinned man? Are you afraid so that you feel the need to clench your bag when you see us? Or watching at the gas station or any other store mixed up you don't steal anything? Do you hold your kids closer, afraid that we do something just because of our dark and beautiful skin? When I know that people think of me as less than a person, I start to feel less of a person. It still amazed me to this day that after you have seen our blood so many times, I would think you could see that our blood is not blue or black or green. It's red, just like yours. But you still continue to paint it on the ground we all walk on. We bleed the same, we cry the same, and we breathe the same air. So when we march down the street for hours, ten hours, day after day, screaming "Black Lives Matter", just know that we matter, and it's time for you to listen and see us. All I want is for justice and equality, not for moms have to tell their kids that their dad or brother or uncle is not under Rome anymore because of the inequality that surrounds a big he with. Why? Why does my mom have to tell my brother, "Never walk alone, especially at night, and certainly not with your hood up? Never put your hands in your pocket and always keep your hands on the dashboard? Never play and never play with a toy gun?" So, let me ask you one more time. Are you afraid or jealous of my melanin, my perfect yet frizzy curls, and my culture, my clothes? Why? Thank you.
Thank you, too, for agreeing to come and read your submissions to us and for submitting them and for representing the Oregon School District so well in this competition. We're really proud of you. Thank you very much. Any of you guys have any comments or questions, any board members? All right, we'll let you guys go out into the cold again, but again, thank you so much. All right, we appreciate your coming and sharing with us.
Thank you.
And Katie, are you checking to see whether?
I am.
Okay. Katie's checking to see whether we have anybody registered for a public comment because we're now on a public phase plan as opposed to emails? So... We'll wait for a minute while she checks. We made sure that we had people appropriately socially distanced if they were going to come and talk to us. We good?
We're good.
Okay, so that ends comments received from the public. OEA report, Laura?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Student report. Okay, Andrew. Now, I kind of asked you last time, you were going to have to make an announcement tonight, so are you ready?
I am ready.
Okay, are you going to like put on a hat or anything like that?
I don't have a hat, and I didn't have any Citadel conflict, but I decided that I would be continuing my education at Citadel to accept the academic full ride that they offered me, so very excited for it. For those of you who don't know, Charleston, South Carolina, so I'm looking forward to it. Should be fun for years, difficult, but I hope to grow as an individual and as a leader. As far as for the student-
Hey, I have a question, though, first on that. Would you have to go down?
Um...
The rest of the day. He says, "Sometimes we aim for something."
Yeah.
Yes.
Terrific. Okay, go with your report.
So, as you all know, students in seventh through twelfth grade returned to the building today, at least some of them. I did speak with some of my fellow classmates who were latest feedback, but they felt that, at least today, teachers weren't necessarily utilizing the time that they were given. So that is something, obviously, we have one day, so we can't really, it's a very, very small sample size. And like most first days of school, you can't really evaluate what happens based off of that. But I do believe that's something we need to continue to watch, just to make sure. Since my family calculated, I'm only going to be in classes for four hours and 10 minutes per week, just based on how my schedule and AP classes fall. So I personally wish that all of that time would be utilized now, realistically. I know it's not going to. So I think we just need to keep encouraging teachers to utilize all 25 minutes or 20 in the case of online. I have not had the opportunity to talk with any seventh or eighth graders. I missed my opportunity while they were here, but I hope that they had the similar experience that maybe the high school students had. I know I was getting tours to freshmen last Wednesday, and they were all really excited to be coming back. Those went pretty well. Don't think there were any exposures. Everybody was safe, six feet apart, so I think it can be done. We just need to put our minds to it. Other than that, I'm looking on the action items, and I noticed that participation in high school fall and spring athletics competitions is going to come up. I know you all are aware of the new executive order that just came out, which does provide some new guidance for athletics. So I'm sure Mr. Carr will have some more information about that, and Dr. Bergstrom will as well. Personally, I'd like to go on the record as saying that I am for having the fall and spring seasons as I believe that this winter season, while it's been short, has provided students a great opportunity to express themselves and kind of give them some of that pent-up energy from 11 months of staying inside. So I really hope that that's something we can continue for the upcoming months.
Okay, any questions for Andrew?
I have a question. So Andrew, you said you haven't been in school yet. You're going to be in tomorrow.
Correct.
Tomorrow's your day. I talked with Jim Flyner earlier, and he said, of course, we just had half of the students today, and so you're in the second half.
Yes, sir. I'm really looking forward to it. I know some of my classmates aren't quite looking forward to being up at 7 o'clock. I was with a friend a few weeks ago, and he was saying, "Yeah, I'm typically up at 11:00 a.m.," and now he has to be up at 7:00 to get to school, so personally, I'm up at 5:00 every day, so it's a shame.
Very good. Excellent.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, then move us to see action items. First item is Worth Woods designation, school forest. Dr. Bergstrom?
Yes, I believe it was Gina who has prepared for us the purple document, which is the designation of the school forest, which is the property that's north of Forest Edge Elementary School. And if the board passes a resolution designating this property as a school forest, there are multiple benefits for us in the future. And Gina has articulated the benefits into the purple so that you can see them very clearly. And I'll just do a real quick rundown of them. The resolution is a part of the process that would allow us to have the school forest designation, which would lead to free trees and seed from the state forest nurseries, technical assistance from the Department of Foresters who carry out the tree planting, and we'd be able to apply for school forest grants, which we know is an important part of the process, and receive assistance from Wisconsin School Forest Education Specialists. So there would be multiple benefits that would come from, following through on the process, to designate our property as an official school forest.
Okay, any board members have any questions of Dr. Bergstrom or Gina about the proposal to adopt a resolution designating Worth Woods as a school forest? Jim?
Yes. Are there, Dr. Bergstrom, are there any restrictions that we need to be concerned about at all? And I know there's been some interest in cooperating with some of the Madison schools to give them access and some of the other school districts and individual schools in Dane County. Any restrictions that we need to be aware of?
No, we asked Gina to look into some funding source restrictions, whether or not any of those existed. And to our, to the best of our knowledge at this time, this does not restrict us. It only opens doors for us.
Thank you.
Dr. Bergstrom, may I, I'm sorry, may I add one more thing?
Go ahead, Gina.
So, and this is not related to the school forest designation, but just since you mentioned it, Mr. LeBrun, the one area that the committee would be cautious is that if we use Fund 80 community ed money, then if we open it up to groups outside our community, then we would need to charge a fee because we cannot use Fund 80 money for groups outside of our community. But designated as a school forest doesn't have an impact in terms of whether or not we can use Fund 80. So that's just one distinction I wanted the board to keep in mind as we move forward with the process.
Yep, Tim's got a follow-up.
And so as a follow-up question, Gina, if we, if we have another school in Madison, an elementary school in Madison, for instance, who wants to come and do something in the school forest, some educational program in the school forest? Can we charge a nominal fee? Is there any restriction as to how little or how much we can charge if we use that Fund 80 for a community ed?
We could charge a nominal fee. It's more a matter of accounting in terms of how much we can charge Fund 80 and how much we would charge Fund 10 and potentially recoup some of those costs. But it's very similar to how we do that with the community pool. So Mr. Wyland and our accountants are very familiar with that process. But I just did want to clarify, since you asked the question about Madison schools, and that's one of the reasons why proceeding with this route is attractive, because we can apply for grant money so that we would be able to open it to those outside groups and not have to charge us by a fee potentially.
Very good. Thank you.
Any questions over here? Kevin, do you have any questions? No, we're good. All right.
Steve, Chris has a question.
I see in here it says to gain final approval, we have to have a forest management plan. So I was just wondering about how long we think that will take and what is the cost of that?
Well, that's part of what we're investigating at the moment. I know that Megan Conapecki has done, has made some inroads, but I also know that this process would allow us to access DNR to help with the development of the plan. Consequently, we're uncertain of the exact cost, but we know that this designation will lessen it.
And that's one of the items that the AdHAC Committee and the subcommittee is going to be working on with the development of the forest plan. Okay, any more questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adopt a resolution designating Worth Woods as a school forest as recommended by administration. I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Tim with the second. Is there any further discussion? Kevin?
No.
Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Pankrits?
Yeah.
Mr. LeBrun?
Yes.
Mr. Maring?
Yes.
Ms. Flanagan?
Yeah.
Ms. Bijak?
Yeah.
Mr. Zak?
Yes, motion carries 6-0. We have a designated, or at least we're in the process of designating, the school forest. Item two on the action items is participation in high school fall and spring athletic competitions. And I think that's Dr. Bergstrom and Mr. Carr. So I'll lead off with you, Dr. Bergstrom.
It is. So I'm going to pull up our screen so Mr. Carr is able to... There we go. Begin the presentation. And I think we've already moved through, oh, we're right where we need to be. So Mr. Carr, I turn this over to you. You can tell me when to move the slides.
You can move this slide. Thank you, Dr. Bergstrom. I want the board to know that we have a great presentation today that was totally flipped at about 11:04 this morning because that's when the Order of Public Health Madison Dane County came out with a new order, and we are excited to talk through some of these things and answer questions that we have. So a couple of things about the new Dane County order that came out this morning was it now allows competition and practices in Dane County, but it also has some gathering limits. So there are some gathering limits of 25 indoor space, about 10 where we were before. So we will still need to travel outside of Dane County to play sports like basketball, hockey, and volleyball because those 20, those 25 individuals would count, team members would count as those, and most of our teams have more than 15 kids on them. And then you put in the other team, and now we're above that. So we're still going to have to travel outside of Dane County for indoor sports. And I'll go through what we have left and remaining towards the end of my presentation. The gathering limits of increased outdoors to 100. So we're excited about that because that gives us some flexibility to do some more things with our students. We will still require masks except for swimming. We still need to social distance, so there are still some things that we will have to do when we're not actively participating. We'll still have to put some safety measures in place to do that. Transportation will remain the same, and our teams will practice in pods of 25 indoors. So that's kind of the new Dane County order. The future directions or policies that we're going to have to recraft a little bit this week will be similar to the winter sports guide, but transportation will remain the same. So we'll have those 25, that limit of 25 student athletes on the bus. The health screeners, this is really important. The health screeners become really more, they become very important now than they were before. But we have so many more participants participating in the fall and spring seasons compared to the winter. We'll go through those numbers. But that is going to be something that we're really going to have to work with our coaches and student athletes on. And then we have to continue to educate all athletes on the importance of wearing proper masks, daily, daily health screener, and then distancing on and off campus. So I think while things have been opened up, and I'm excited, they are starting to open up a little bit more. We can't forget that we're still within a pandemic, and there's still some stuff that we should take if we want to continue to have the success that we've had so far. Next slide, please. So I'll take you through the winter. You've seen this chart before. We've added a couple of games in different areas. The boys' basketball team was able to pick up a couple of extra games. Remember, the asterisks are the numbers of games where we, two teams, so we split those numbers due to our coaches, coaches' discretion. So we want to make sure that we've added those games. We also wanted to remind you that, and we'll get to this in a little bit, but wrestling is, has completed their season at sectionals. Boys' swimming has completed their season at state, and we'll get to that. Girls' basketball will open the tournament series on Wednesday. Boys' basketball starts next week, and the hockey team is playing tonight in Monroe against Stoughton. So that's kind of where we are with our five sports that we're currently having. You've seen this information before, but just want to go over it because we're going to have to keep going over it and over and it and over it. The health and safety protocols, we're still going to require the health checks by 9:00 because of the volume of students and the volume of contract tracing that we all have to do. We will still have to mask. We will still physical distance, and we will still physical distance and masks on buses. We know that that's a point of education with our, with our team, so we will continue to work on that. We have had, the good news is we have, we have held out a couple more students due to symptoms, and we've quarantined a couple more since the last time we've spoke. But our close contacts and our positive testes have stayed the same, so those numbers have not increased. The health check process, we have been working hard, and our numbers have been better and better and better. And we, I am proud of some of our student athletes who have missed that deadline that have reached out and taken responsibility for that, so that's been really good. I think we still need to make sure that students are doing this honestly with a self-assessment because now that we're intermixing, the inner, the exposure level is higher. We will still do the two-tiered process before 9:00 and before practice. And again, we will continue to educate. I think these are the points of our education of the why, why it's important, why it's important to do the screener, why it's important to do masks, and why it's important to do transportation in the way that we need to do those. So I think if we, if we stay on message in those three areas, I think we can be really successful. So we do have some congratulations that I wanted to share with you. We had four individuals qualify for swimming, the state tournament in swimming. Spencer Staluka, an individual and relay, David Stevenson, an individual and relay, Josh Weber and Connor Brats, both rounded out that relay. Spencer also broke a school record in the 50 meters, so we're excited about that. And then this weekend, our wrestling team finished up with these four young men, Preston Collins, Seth Niday, Tyler Wald, and Brandon Little, all finishing their year at the sectional tournament. The sectional tournament this year for us was really a stacked tournament because we had to do some reconfigurations with the different divisions, and we were in one of the toughest sectionals in the state. So Coach Luce was very proud of that group coming out of that, that tournament. Okay, so let's move to the fall and spring, and then I'll take questions at the end. So a couple of things we're going to talk about. The nice thing about the winter season was most of our games that we played were at high schools. So we, we reduced the need for facility rental. Because this year is so different and so kind of wonky, we're kind of cramming that fall season in between our winter and spring seasons. So I anticipate that we'll have some budget impacts when we need to do some rentals for girls' tennis, football, volleyball, and boys' soccer. That will probably be something that we'll have to explore. Even though we will be able to play some games in the, in Dane County, there will be some needs to maybe play on artificial turf or, or different. Volleyball will be an indoor sport that will have to travel outside of Dane County due to our, our numbers. Hopefully, those numbers will get better, and as we go through the season, that might change. We will have longer distances to travel. You've seen this information before, but right now, we're planning on playing most of our games for volleyball in Beaver Dam. Beaver Dam has a new facility that can accommodate all of our teams as well as our other teams in our conference that haven't played yet. We're also looking for taking our tennis team to Elkhorn to their indoor facility because in early March, you will, as you all remember, early March could be six inches of snow on the ground and cold. So we want to make sure that we are able to give those ladies some opportunities. We will still, because of the 25 cap on our buses, we will still need more buses to do that. And it will increase because we're going to have more sports and more participants, and we'll kind of go through those numbers as on the next slide. So other information that I'd like the board to be aware of. We have put together a schedule with the other A.D.s in Dane County, but the schedule is going to look a lot different because we're not weaving into the set schedule for the winter. So basically, this is going to be a kind of a Dane County-only league of those schools that couldn't play in the fall. So it's going to look different. There will be an overlap with our spring seasons, and I will get to that towards the end of my report. We will have a schedule that is set at the varsity level. Additional lower-level games may be limited due to a variety of factors, officials, facilities, those sort of things. We will have a problem. I think one of the things that we've, we've discovered as we've put these together, and it's just a reminder, we will have more missed class time because typically and traditionally, these sports start before school starts. So when you talk about girls' golf, or you talk about tennis, or you talk about soccer, those typically, you know, girls' golf will usually finish their season two weeks into the, two weeks into the school year, and they play a lot of their games and a lot of their matches before the school year even starts, and that's an all-day thing. So we've had to adjust some things there. We will, Tim asked this question last time. We will have some challenges in filling positions, I think, for both the alternate fall and spring seasons just due to some concerns with safety. I think some of, most of our coaches are, are ready to go, but we do have some coaches that are concerned. And then the out-of-season schedule, because typically, our soccer team plays in the fall, and people plan that way, we might not be able to, they might not be able to coach in the spring. So that will be something that will- So that will be something that we'll need to work through. And then the W.I. postseason, the W.I. hasn't been clear about what the W.I. events will look like, if it will be state tournaments or not. Um, they will let us know that in probably the next thirty to sixty days, but, um, we do not know for sure what their, what they call their culminating events will look like, if it will be one game, if it will be two games, if it will be a traditional series. Um, we're waiting to hear back from them on that. So just some information very quickly. These are projected numbers, we don't have them, um, for sure yet because we don't have all of our kids signed up. But the top row is the total number of athletes that we typically have or ballpark number, um, for these, uh, alternate fall season sports. Um, and then if you look at the second, um, row, you will see that these are the games that we've scheduled so far. Um, and it's about half of what we play, um, because the season's about half as short. Those are some of the things that I'd wanted to make sure that I shared with you. If you look at the JV two games in boys' soccer and girls' volleyball, we split those in half because we typically have four teams. Um, this would give us weather permitting and boys' soccer some flexibility to add more games now that we can play inside the county, so I'm excited about that. I'm excited that we won't have to travel outside the county to practice, uh, because that was a concern with some of our contact and collision sports, um, like football. So, um, we're excited about those opportunities to give you an idea of when they start. Um, you see that last row of when those, uh, alternate fall season starts. And if you look like today, uh, we started with a small pot of, uh, girls' swimming. So the last one is just some notes, we can host matches in girls' golf. We're gonna travel for meets and girls' swim because we've already set those schedules up and because we can't be indoors, um, with the, with the limits that we have. Um, with cross-country, we're, we, we will be able to host meets, we will be able to host football games under the, um, new order with a hundred people now. Fans might be a, something that we need to, uh, work through, the same would be with boys' soccer. Uh, we will travel early for tennis matches indoors and then we will travel because of the, uh, the number of limits for volleyball, that we will travel to places outside of Dane County to play those games because we're not able to do those inside. And then this is just information that's important. Um, we will have some, some overlap between our fall season, alternate fall and our spring seasons. Um, as you can see, um, most of the sports will end in the, um, the end of May and then the spring seasons, which are at the bottom, typically will start at the, in the middle of April. So there will be about a two or three week, depending on what sport a, a student athlete decides to play, there will be some, um, some overlap there. So, um, we just wanted to make sure we illustrated that, uh, for people because that will be a, um, something that we will have to work through. So the action steps, um, we will continue to educate our, our athletes on the importance of masks, the, the health screeners and distancing on and off campus, uh, because we know it's important, we know that they can do that. We're gonna communicate with coaches about the public health order after today, um, as we start to ramp up for the alternate fall and spring seasons and then we will finalize our plans, uh, for the remainder of the school year and share that with families. So we have some, um, we have some exciting work to do, which is, uh, at eleven o'clock and I didn't know that we would be doing it in eleven oh four, we would be, so I'm excited for doing that. Um, because this will really give our, our kids an opportunity, um, to do some things, uh, within the guidelines of public health. I think that's always important to talk about too, so, um, with that, I think I will take questions.
I understand the order from public health, the only sport that, uh, we can't host is volleyball, so that would be similar to the, what, the winter sports, uh, that'd be subject to the same restrictions or recommendations from public health, uh, but their recommendation would be not to play outside the county for volleyball?
For volleyball and swimming, we won't be able to, because they're indoor sports, we won't be able to host those in, at our facilities, correct?
Okay, was public health still recommending that we not go outside the county?
Public health is recommending that we don't go outside the county in their F.A.Q.s. Um, their, uh, recommendations for travel are to limit competitions to teams from your community, avoid lengthy travel to competitions and avoid carp pooling or other modes of group travel to the greatest extent possible.
Okay, cause one of the issues that the board, uh, voted with respect to the winter sports was because public health was recommending that we don't play outside of the county, um.
May I make a clarification with that though?
Yeah.
Uh, and Mr. Carr, please, please correct me if I'm wrong, but we would be playing Dane County schools. We would just have to leave the county to get the, to be able to do that within an indoor facility. So we're not playing teams from across the state, we're playing Dane County teams.
Okay, and, but.
But we're still leaving the county.
But, okay, when we left the county, as I understood it, public health said for the winter sports, we don't recommend that you do that. Is that still in place with respect to volleyball and swimming?
It is, and part of the, part of the F.A.Q. says that they recommend we play local teams and play local teams locally, is that correct, Mr. Carr?
That is correct, and we would, we would play some, uh, teams outside of Dane County like Fort Atkinson, Beaver Dam, Edgerton, uh, Lowdy. Uh, so we would play out, we would play non-Dane County schools outside of Dane County, that's correct.
Okay. What I'm trying to get at is the, your recommending and the administration's recommendation is that we will play, uh, fall and spring sports as you identified it and that would be in compliance with public health?
Most of it would be and some of it would not be.
What would, what would not be?
Would be traveling outside of the county.
And that would, okay. Because that's what you had read.
The twenty-five person. When we are outside of the county.
But that was, the, the travel outside of the counties, that's what you had asked us and we had action on at the last meeting, so that's what, if we're gonna take action, it would be to permit that.
Correct, the rest of it is all within the, the bounds of.
Got it, I just wanted to make sure we framed what the board potential action would be, so. Okay, sorry for jumping in right away, but I wanted to make sure we were clear. So I'm gonna go around the room and then Kevin, I'll come back to you and we're finished with in-person, okay? Troy, um, so I guess just so unclear, we're talking both fall and spring sports tonight and if we take action, it would apply to both?
Yes.
Can I ask a clarifying question on that? This health order only goes until March tenth and don't the spring start? I guess some do start before March, I guess, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, it's for that's clarifying.
Um, so I guess I'm a little unclear on the spectator requirement, so when we get, when we get to hosting events within Dane County, say we're doing home, cross-country events, that's limited to a hundred, a hundred people because it's outside, it's, how are we, you know, are we going to try to enforce that or?
Yeah, I, I think we would try, so it depends on how many students we have in the team, how many students are on the other team and it may end up that we're not able to have, um, spectators.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's a try there, I think absolutely we will enforce that number. Um, if you read the newspaper. Um, so yeah, if we look at, if we look at something like, uh, football, for example, if we have fifty, if we have, uh, if we have a number of one hundred people that we can put in a gathering, not including officials and coaches, we, I would talk with Meldow at Stoughton and say, we will do, we will have fifty, uh, players and you can have fifty and that's it. So we would definitely limit those numbers. That's why we, that's why we can't do volleyball inside, even though only six girls play at a time.
Um, and then I guess, um, I think I talked about this last time, but the, the overlap, and you mentioned it Mike, that we have some overlap between the seasons now. Currently our COVID, uh, addendum states that athletes would not participate in multiple sports. Are you anticipating we would revise that addendum for the spring, um, spring-fall season?
Yes, I think we would, we would revise it for our, uh, our programs because we are, um, we know that we will be compliant, are you asking about club sports?
Yes, I guess, I mean, yeah, I, I would like to know what we would plan to do for club sports.
We would, our recommendation is that we do what we did for the winter season and not, um, not permit club sports and only permit, uh, have students choose to do, um, their school sport.
Or, or another school sport.
Correct. Um, that's all I have for now, oh, okay, Anna.
Um, I, I guess, so my, um, questions were similar to Troy's, I appreciate the clarification on, um, on spectators and I guess my, my comment would be, um, I would still, uh, like to see the students who are, or the athletes who are participating in, um, any of the sports that require travel outside the county in order to play, to, to continue with virtual learning, um, that would be my, my preference, just as another safety measure, uh, until public health allows, um, allows play within the county, so that would be, that would be my comment.
Thanks, Anna, Tim? I don't really have any. Krista?
I just have a couple. Um, I wanted to reiterate what Troy, Troy said that and what Mike, you said that if students are playing OHS athletics, they're not doing any other sports. I think that's a health and safety measure, so I think we should continue that. Um, I also want to address spectators like Mike did, that we still continue to limit spectators, um, where we can. I guess my other questions are, um, you did men, mention that, um, your focus is on varsity level games based on referees and things, I guess. You know, Mike, you and I agree on this, that the point of high school sports is fun and, uh, physical activity. So I guess I want to say, can we be creative with the lower levels and not necessarily require referees, but you have scrimmages or you have competitions where you're not reffing or you're not keeping score because the whole point is fun and competition and physical activity. So I just kinda wanted maybe have you address that a little bit more. Is it more of a space concern or is it more of a referee concern or health order concern or cost concern?
Yeah, I think, um, we're gonna work through that again tomorrow as A.D.s. Um, we have always kind of prioritized varsity first, um, especially in the winter, um, because there, there are multiple factors. Uh, we met as an A.D. group today at eleven twenty-four, which is twenty minutes after this came out and talked through some things, we're gonna meet again tomorrow. I think we will, uh, try to give as many opportunities as we can, uh, but there might be some constraints, so that's why I also put in that, um, in the, uh, table, you know, our, our, right now we're looking at maybe playing half the schedule, um, of, of, even for the varsity teams. Um, and again, if you remember from my last presentation, there are some, there are some schools that may not offer as many teams as we do, so therefore the number of opponents sometimes goes down. Um, but I'm not saying, I, I, I'm just telling you that I think we need to prioritize varsity play first and then try to add as many lower level games as we can, but they will not be, uh, congruent numbers.
Um, final, it's just, um, a compliment, you know, I've been to a few basketball games, uh, you know, my son plays basketball and the kids are doing a really great job in games, wearing masks. I mean, I worked out yesterday at a facility, had to wear a mask, running on a treadmill, it's not fun. And these kids are doing a really, and I'm just speaking from basketball perspective, the kids are doing a really good job, so I want to compliment you and your staff, um, just in terms of educating them and them really sticking to our protocols. And I hope that you and the coaches have been getting some thanks. I know you took it on the chin for some of this stuff and you've worked really hard to schedule these games and get these kids' sport seasons, it's not the sport seasons they wanted or you wanted, but thank you, you guys have done a great job and I hope parents recognize that and that you're hearing from parents and thanks.
Thank you. Kevin, anything from, from you?
Yeah, Mike, would you mind going back to the slide, I just want to take another, uh, look at the, um, the, the one where it showed like the number of potential games, yeah. Just so I understand, what's in parentheses, is that the typical number of games, is that what I heard you say?
That's the max, maximum number of games, um, allowed by the W.I. And I will, I will preface that comment with, um, our boy, to give you an example, our boys' soccer team, we can play twenty-four games, but our coaching staff typically wants to play seventeen or eighteen games. We don't always play the maximums in all of our sports, uh, but those are the maximums that we've listed.
Okay, I was just, I was just checking to make sure that we weren't playing nine games out of a typical twenty-four, that's a max. And the nine was chosen because of the number of teams in Dane County they could compete against? I'm just using boys' soccer as one example.
Correct, so we have, um, without looking at the schedule, we have teams like MG and Stoughton and Fort and Edgewood and, um, uh, Lowdy and Beaver Dam, so there, there are teams outside of that now. The, uh, Madison School District has not decided if they've played, if they want to play yet or not and that's where we get a ton of our lower level games, when we decide, when we, in a normal season, we would play four or five or six lower level, uh, soccer games with those schools because they have multiple teams as well. Um, so that's why there's a little bit of a disconnect there. Because even with the nine, even with the nine scheduled games in boys' soccer, for example, uh, the varsity JV games match up, but then we only have, would have six for JV two games because there are three teams that don't have JV two teams.
Gotcha. I know, I know this order is brand new, so people are still trying to figure it out and it's pretty amazing you guys had to call twenty minutes after the order came out, so you guys like got the bat signal going on or something, but, um, the pods of twenty-five, Mike, so does that mean that the basketball team, for example, can have a real practice? Or they still have to be divided like three to hoop and doing more skill stuff?
Yeah, so once, so not right now, because the order is still in effect, so, but once the new order takes place, we will be able to, um, to practice fully, uh, within those groups.
And when, when does that order take place, I'm sorry, I missed that?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, thank you. Um, I just want to clarify too, to be a hundred percent sure, because we've talked quite a bit about club participation. I understand why that's kind of a black and white, but will we have, um, examples of kids playing two Oregon sports? And that is okay if, if there is overlap, correct?
Yes, we feel that that's okay because those are our protocols and we can control that.
Okay, that's what I figured. Um, last thing, I mean, just, uh, talking about kind of the lower levels and especially because, you know, obviously it's about fun and it's about activity, it's also about development. Um, you wonder with the lower levels, if we can get creative as rotating the top eight or ten, I mean, rotate all the kids and they play more games, which would make it much easier to schedule to play within Dane County, but keep it under twenty-five, couple refs, couple scorekeepers, couple coaches. So just, I mean, Krista was throwing out some ideas as well and you don't need us to be creative for you, but hopefully, especially for the lower levels, we can do some kind of rotation where it's easier to schedule games and these kids can get games in and keep it under twenty-five as an example for basketball, so, just a thought. I'm playing a, I wanna be a athletic director right now, but it's just something I was thinking of sitting here, so. Thanks for everyone's involvement, thanks for all the kids for, uh, doing a good job. Um, I, I guess one last question on that. Um, if you go to the slide about the health tracking and, um, the cumulative cases, um, it doesn't really show like how it's built, it just has a cumulative number, but can you give us any idea on kind of trends? I mean, are we seeing, you know, a positive trend in terms of less, less issues, symptoms, et cetera?
Yeah, so we had, um, most of our symptoms and, uh, mostly a lot of the, uh, the data you see here was when we came back from break. Um, so that was when, when most of our symptoms came, uh, back and that's when we had the, the positive tests. Um, again, the positive tests that we have had and that's why it's really important for our kids to, um, can, you just socially distance outside of, um, outside of school and, um, outside of practice because I think as the vaccine has rolled out, it has given some people a, a sense of, um, uh, a, a false sense of security and I think we want to make sure that we keep, uh, doing the things that we need to do. We need to mask, we need to wash our hands and we need to socially distance, um, if we want this to happen. Now, I do know, I do have some coaches that are concerned about, um, when we do go on. I do have some coaches that are concerned about, um, when we do go on spring break and what that's going to look like when, when kids come back from different places, um, if they travel. Um, so that's something that we've, uh, talked about a little bit, but we will, uh, continue to explore that.
Yeah, it'll be interesting. I know you guys are collecting a ton of data and there's a lot of manual work being done. It'd be interesting to kind of see like a cumulative amount and, you know, since the last board meeting or some kind of interim number. So we can see what kind of trends are happening. And obviously we hope they're going in the same direction and then we'll be able to see, uh, but anecdotally, I appreciate the, the summary of what you're seeing, Mike.
Yeah, we do have all this data. Um, this is just, this is what we've gleaned from the sports and athletic data. Um, but now that we have school kids, more kid, more of our kids will be back in school, we'll have, uh, a clearer picture, but we do have this by building. So we do have that.
Awesome. Thanks, Mike.
Troy?
I have another question.
Yep.
So if I, if you mentioned it and I missed it, I apologize, but, um, are we, are we proposing anything for middle school sports this time?
We are not proposing anything, um, for middle school sports right now. Uh, they're basically all of Dane County has decided not to do basketball. Um, the next middle school sport that we would offer would be track and that will be in a couple months. So hopefully the numbers will look better at that time. And if you've been a middle school parent, you know that, um, track is a really popular thing in the summer, in the springtime and the numbers are always really, really big. Um, but we will, uh, continue to monitor that. And if we can offer that in a safe way, we will do that.
Track was what came to my mind, Mike, in that, and maybe we couldn't do competitions, but maybe we could, we could do. And according to this, uh, this order, it seems like we could do practices.
Yep, we can do practices as long as we're masking, as long as we, we fall under the, the number of gathering. Yep.
Okay, thank you. Tim?
Uh, just one more, uh, quick question, Mike. Um, as, as a number of people have mentioned, you know, this is about fun. This is about competition. It isn't as much about scoring and, and, uh, you know, uh, season ending competition, those kinds of things. Is there an opportunity for us to, um, just a little bit loosen things up for our own facilities? I know that CYO basketball didn't happen here and lots of kids participate in that. Um, you know, is there an opportunity to have smaller groups, um, you know, parent-led smaller groups use our facilities in a controlled manner, um, just to get that fun, uh, competition-based fun, um, available to kids who aren't in varsity sports?
Yeah, that's something that we can look at. I think one of the things, because this is really so new, and I think the other piece that we have to remember is almost all of our fall sports, um, are going to start inside. So football will start inside. Like, I wish we lived in a, a warmer climate where we could go outside right away. Um, but we are still going to be stressed when all these, um, sports start again. We will be stressed after school on, uh, on gym space because again, we have the highest number of sports and the highest number of participants that will all have to start inside that we normally never do. In a typical fall, the only sport that plays inside is volleyball. Everybody else is outside. So, um, we, we will explore some of those options and we'll talk about that tomorrow in our AD's meeting. Um, it's on our radar. We've talked about it.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay. So my understanding is that the administration's recommendation and plan is to proceed with the winter and spring sports as outlined today, you know, pending that, the order in March, or we're, we're what to revise that. So I, I don't know that we need to take any action tonight, but I would throw that question out to the board if that's the plan of the administration.
I guess I think we would need to because of volleyball. Is that not correct?
That's the only one that's, that's different.
Um, tennis.
That's going against a health order.
Tennis will be traveling to Oak Horn. So there, there are some situations within the broader school where we would be traveling outside of the county in order to be able to have more people in the facility than we currently have. So.
To be consistent, then, what we would have would be a motion to approve travel outside of the competition, or outside of the county for competition as addressed tonight or as, as outlined tonight, um, to the administration.
Do we need to broaden the motion to also include, unless anybody else wants to make amendments to other things, but to also include the mandate of, or OHS athletics students only participate in OHS athletics and that we, um, encourage the administration to, um, use best guidelines regarding spectators or something like that, that I think, you know, we've sunsetted from winter sports and those two things are important to us in terms of our health and safety protocols and things that this board allows with sports that we want to make sure carry over. I just think those were parts of the motion last time that are above and beyond. That could be wrong. I mean, that's.
I'm wondering, um, Katie, if it's possible for you to look up the, the motion from last time because I wonder if we can even use the same language.
Right.
Use that template.
Yes.
To prove, we'll go, go forward. Do we need to adjust that spectator, um, piece of it? I mean, the intent would be that.
The attendance.
Yeah, the attendance would be, the, the spectator attendance would be, uh, determined by the administration consistent with the public health order, as I understand it.
But if we are allowing volleyball to go outside Dane County, I think we still want the same sort of, um, what, it's still pertinent, what we said last time, that we want to match up with school districts that model our health and safety protocols and we, and we would prefer two spect, two spectators, that's going up to four or whatever. I mean, I don't know how you felt that that went, Mike. Um, was that prohibitive to you? Is that something, it doesn't really matter because you're doing that anyway?
Yeah, I think, um, it's early to tell. Um, to give you an example, we play, girls' basketball plays, um, Middleton on Wednesday in the opening round of the tournament in Baraboo. And Middleton requested that we didn't have any fans and I advocated for at least two fans. Um, so it's been, it's been okay. Um, I don't know what the new order will bring in people's minds as far as, uh, what that will look like. I do know that when we play tennis and when we play volleyball, uh, in Beaver Dam, the fans will be limited because we will be playing on really short courts, um, because we're playing so many games at the same time. So I think that will be, there, it won't be, uh, like a traditional volleyball game that we have at, uh, at our place where we could fit 2,000 people.
Did you have a motion from last time? Did you read that?
To allow all winter sports to schedule games immediately to compete outside of Dane County following their satisfaction of WIAA minimum practice requirements and strictly following the OSD protocols presented tonight, including specifically strongly preferring a limitation of two spectators per athlete, but up to no more than four spectators per athlete and ensuring the schools we compete with have similar requirements in place.
I think we can use that language.
Yeah, substitute.
Just substitute, yeah, the season.
Does everybody understand that? Kevin, did you get that?
I did.
Okay.
It's my motion too, so I remember it.
Yeah, that's why I asked. Just a test there.
Except this time Les Roberts ruled the order on amendment.
Yeah.
So now, if someone wants to make a motion, now's the time.
I'll take that motion.
And there would be the substitute then, that would use that language except substitute in, uh, fall and spring athletics?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Krista's with the second. And then I'm going to have Katie read it to make sure that we all understand it.
Ready?
Yeah.
To allow all fall and spring sports to schedule games immediately to compete outside of Dane County following their satisfaction of WIAA minimum practice requirements and strictly following the OSD protocols presented tonight, including specifically strongly preferring a limitation of two spectators per athlete, but up to no more than four spectators per athlete and ensuring the schools we compete with have similar requirements in place.
Okay, that's the motion. Mike, are you good with that in terms of what you need?
I am.
Okay, Dr. Bergstrom?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion or questions about the motion? Troy, anything from you? Anna?
No, the only thing I would mention is that, um, I, I, I would be offering an amendment, but I'm, I'm not sure that that will be, um, supported by the group. So I'm just mentioning that I will likely be going no on the motion for the purposes of not having the additional, um, added safety measure of having students participate virtually while they participate outside of the county.
Anything, Tim?
No.
Krista? Not for me. Kevin, are you good? Okay, we have a motion, a second. I think everyone understands that. So I'd have Katie call the roll.
Mr. Mary?
Yes.
Ms. Flanagan?
Yeah.
Mr. Pinkerts?
Yes.
Ms. Gia?
No.
Mr. Lebrun?
Yes.
Mr. Z.
Yes, motion carries. All right, Mike, thank you very much. I know you've got a ton of work to do now. Uh, we appreciate all the week work that you've done up to this point and the, for the presentation tonight. All right.
I appreciate it and our, our kids and our coaches appreciate it as well. Thank you very much.
All right, discussion items, D, committee reports, policy. Anna?
Thank you. We held a meeting last week. Wait, was it this Monday? Yeah, last week. On, um, February 2nd, Tuesday, uh, we had three items of business, um, the first of which was, um, related to policy 180.06, which was the notification process used for special meetings. Our policy committee is recommending a commodification. And so that will be coming to the board at our next meeting. Uh, basically it just changes how the, how we are notified of a special meeting going around the hand delivery from Katie, which we would love to see her face and those deliveries, to an email communication notification. So, uh, pretty straightforward. Second item that we discussed is policy 176. And really it, that is a policy that looks at the student representation on board meetings. And the intent for that was to look at it from an equity lens. And we're doing this with all of our policies, looking at those as to how they, uh, reflect equity and the values that hold. And it was a really good discussion. Um, we're not recommending any changes to the policy because the policy is fairly open-ended as to, um, how that looks. But we are going to work with Dr. Bergstrom on, um, developing another leadership team that can consist of some leadership from some other groups within our district. In particular, if you look at the high school activities and clubs, there's 50 clubs listed and there are 10 middle school clubs listed. So the goal is to, um, have some correspondence from some of those other leadership groups reflected at some of our board meetings as well. Um, so that is something that we are looking at adding more voices to that student representation, um, for that purpose. And then the third item we talked about is, uh, really looking at the, our employee handbook and specifically looking at how, what holidays are, um, paid and, uh, observed. And so our policy committee is working with the OBA to reevaluate and really deep, think deeper into how those are, um, decided and reviewed. And that is, uh, still, um, to be discussed. We've got more information coming from the administrative team to take a culture look at how those are handled. And that's the report from policy.
Thanks. Any questions of Anna? Tim?
Just a clarification. Um, in that policy, uh, meeting and talking about the calendar, it's important that everybody remember we've already approved the calendar for the 21-22 year. So any changes, if there are any, won't be made until the 22-23 year, if at all.
All right. Any other questions for Anna? Thanks, Anna. Sounds like you had a busy meeting. All right, Vision, Troy?
Uh, we have not met, but we have a meeting scheduled for next, Tuesday at 5:00 PM.
Okay. Good. All right. Takes us to information, I have the report on WASB convention. Uh, we, uh, talked about this at the last meeting, that some members have gone to some interesting sessions. So if you want to, we'll go through and briefly share if you have anything that you want to share. And I'll start over here. Tim, anything for you?
Um, the sessions that I keyed in on were frankly more near-term sessions. They were built around reopening and staying open safely, crisis, uh, to calm, communicating effectively. And it was, those are really more of a benchmark for me, um, because it's amazing that things that came up and were, seemed to be, uh, uh, kind of cutting edge ideas were things that we have been doing, um, all along, um, for the last year, frankly. And so, um, that was really nice to hear. That was comforting to hear that, uh, because it was really new news for a fair number of people. Um, the other thing, uh, that I tuned into was, um, proven tactics to increase community engagement. I think we're always looking for ways to engage our community. And I think we do such a great job from the, um, uh, from the team here, um, to start with, but also because we have such great partnerships, um, built with, uh, Friends of the Oregon School District. And, um, we're working on building a stronger, uh, connection to, um, village leadership, uh, multiple community leadership, not just here in Oregon, but in Pittsburgh, as well as in Brooklyn, et cetera. And so, um, more than anything, those, um, each one of those sessions really was a great reminder of how fortunate we are. And sometimes we need to see that in a completely objective environment to really appreciate it. Otherwise it's, uh, you know, we don't, we take for granted or lack of a better term. So that's, that's what I saw this time. Again, it was more near-term, um, need for me than, uh, long-term planning this time around.
Thanks, Krista.
Uh, yeah, I think, you know, the WASB convention is, um, no matter if it's in-person or virtual, I think it's, um, they always have really great sessions and, you know, we're a district of continuous learning. So I really value that the board members here, the board members I've served with, we don't think we know it all and we all know we have a lot to learn. And so we're not afraid to dig into these sessions and, and, and learn about things that are not part of our comfort zone or not part of our echo chamber. And so I think that's really important. Um, I listened to sessions on school finance, community engagement, classrooms of the future, strategic planning. But I guess the one I wanted to talk about for a second is one that was about free speech and discourse in schools. And I think it's really topical with the district with our anti-hate speech policy. And it was run by a law firm out of Milwaukee. And I think there seems to be a lot of misunderstanding about the First Amendment. And you've heard about it with our anti-hate speech policy, or you hear about it, you know, just in the world right now. But, um, while you can say or do anything, that doesn't mean you're protected from consequence. So, um, this was really good about that speech is verbal and nonverbal actions. Um, you know, when you talk about staff and free speech, um, you can have speech as an employee and that's not necessarily protected. So if a staff person makes statements about their official status, that they're not speaking as citizens for First Amendment purposes, which I think is, is, um, important, or speech that are on matters that are not, not of public concern, that's not protected free, free speech. Or as you look at students, um, and, you know, I give a lot of credit to Gina Jones and who actually worked on our anti-hate speech policy and how lucky we are to have an attorney on staff because these are all in line with what Gina has taught us about our anti-hate speech policy. It's really about what students, what was the meaning behind the speech and what did under, other students understand the speech to be. So there's a lot of court cases out there. And when we look at our anti-hate speech policy, we look, um, did the, did the speech, is it vulgar, offensive, looter and decent? Does it promote illegal conduct? Was the speech school sponsored, like a school newsletter or a video? Or did the speech cause, or is it likely to cause a substantial disruption? So, or does it infringe on the rights of others? So those are really important things to understand about why our anti-hate speech policy works, is lawful, and that, again, people can say whatever they want to say, but that doesn't mean that there aren't consequences to it. So I found it very fascinating and very topical, uh, for us in our school district right now as we're teaching, all of us about this policy and we're doing a lot of learning associated with it. So, um, you know, this video is available on Vimeo if anybody wants to see it. And I know Troy listened to this too, but I thought it was really good. So that's it for me.
Thanks, Krista. I know Gina and I will, will, uh, confirm that, uh, when lawyers get together and talk about the First Amendment, it's like a geek convention. We get all excited about that because it's, it's really an amazing area of law, very complicated and complex. very complicated and complex, but brings up a lot of interesting situations. And that's never been more true than the last couple of years. And so we've done, I know, a lot of work at our firm just working on First Amendment stuff. And I know Gina's, Gina's been an expert in that area for a long time and has tracked that and advised us appropriately along the way.
And the other thing that they said is be proactive with your policies. And so I also want to compliment Leslie, and Mike was part of that, and Gina, that we're doing things ahead of time. We're looking at our policies from an equity lens. So we are doing things, and our leader, as a school district, in terms of this regard. So, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Troy, your honor? I think Troy.
I would just follow up on Krista because I attended that same session. And I also had my notes to see proactive versus reactive. I found that the whole discussion about protected speech versus unprotected speech was really well done in how they laid that out in terms of staff and of students. And then they also talked about, you know, there's always this strong desire to use a template for your policies. And they were really recommending you not do that, that you develop your policies using, you can use a template as a starting point, but really diving into what's important to your community. And, you know, we've obviously experienced that with recent policies. So I thought that was really valuable. I would just point out, if anyone is, you know, I watched a couple of these live, and then I've been watching more of them after the fact on Vimeo. And a suggestion, if anyone does that, is go to the WASB site directly. That's, I found it easier to navigate, and the videos are better quality than if you go to the conference site. So just a note, I'm finding I have more on my list I want to get through. Other sessions that I would just talk about, that I attended, were long-range master planning and strategic planning. There were a couple of really good sessions on that. And the things that we're doing well, but other things that I think we can learn from other schools on. So, you know, looking at if these master plans being a flexible and a living document. You know, we just went through a huge milestone with EPS, and now we can refocus on phase two and really making those master plan and more of a living document. And, you know, going, it goes beyond just the physical aspects of our school district and looking at staffing and the educational piece as well, and how they're all tied together. So that's, that's a lot of the work that we're going to be tackling in the VSC committee or continuing to work on in the VSC meetings. And then there was another one, intentionally aligning goals to action, which I thought was really well, was kind of about the New Berlin School District. Very similar to the steps that we've taken or the actions that we take with having an overall strategic plan for your district, but then also an action plan district-wide, and then the school action plan. And we do that very well. But I think what I, what I saw in your presentation is aligning it all together and, you know, going from the overall broad view all the way down to teachers' castle and PPGs and taking it right down into the classroom and tying, you know, tying that all together. So I know that we do that, but it was just a little different way to present that. And that's over the highlights.
Great, thanks. Leslie or administrative team members, anybody want to volunteer?
Yes, I'm happy to talk about the ones that I watched. I wasn't able to watch any of them in real time, but I was really grateful for the recordings. And because it's also a resource that any of us can go back to later, and we have all of their slides and accompanying documents. But Troy and I always seem to find ourselves at the same sessions because we, I watch the same ones too, Troy. I went to the New Berlin session, intentionally aligning goals to actions. And I noticed that within their plan, they were really emphasizing universal design for learning, which is one of the things that's an emphasis coming out of John Tanner's department. I also went to the Wisconsin Heights presentation on staying the course for continuous improvement. And part of what intrigued me there is that this summer at our administrative's virtual workshop, we spoke about the quote that every system is perfectly designed to achieve exactly the results it gets. And what does that mean? And that this, the Wisconsin Heights presentation started off with that also. So it's good to see that a lot of our districts in Southern Wisconsin were reading a lot of the same books and having a lot of the same discussions. And it's important we continue to learn from one another. And both of those presentations included the Plan Do Study Act, which is something that we have also continuously spoken about here. I also watched the Proven Tactics to Increase Community Engagement. And what was really great about that is that it had tactics for staff engagement, students, families, and community. Really, honestly, things that you can just pick up and utilize. So I found that to be a very helpful piece of time spent. And then, of course, I watched my colleague's presentation, Sustainability Through Net Zero Strategies, How to Begin, and Dream Big. And that was Andy and a lot of our brain Fendorf colleagues who presented that on Friday.
Thanks for doing that, Andy.
You bet.
Yeah, I know Andy's talked a lot over at the conference, in particular, on environmental stuff. And we're becoming sort of sources over there for environmental stuff, and Andy in particular. It's really good. Any other volunteers?
Yeah, I can share one thing. I, and the only one that I looked at that was different from the ones already mentioned was I also looked at the Cedarburg School District's Long Range Master Plan. And it was, it was interesting, and it was sort of a contrast, I think, from ours. It was mostly geared toward facilities planning and referendum staging, I guess I would say. Although it did have a good, a good process of doing the long-range master plan process and having it being grounded in the teaching and learning, I guess, needs. Because they're, they're engaging, they're experiencing some growth, not nearly as much as us, but still enough that they needed to add some more facilities. But they also do, you know, a lot about similar things like project-based collaborative learning spaces, and then an emphasis on industry partnerships, which is something that I think we already have through the Dane County Youth Apprenticeship Program run by Greg Granberg, and also the content integration. So the way that we've tried to integrate STEAM. And so they have a lot of, like, engineering aspects that are in there. And they also have, like, a whole student emphasis and project-based learning. So it's, it's interesting. I mean, it was, I think, some, some things that were a little bit different because the long-range plan was obviously geared a lot toward improving facilities or upgrading facilities. But it's, then kind of like others said, it was nice to see other people in similar situations as us, undertaking some similar strategies. But also I'm proud of the work that we've already done in some of these same areas. So that was just one other thing.
Anybody else?
Mr. Zach, may I jump in for a moment?
You sure can, Gina.
So I wanted to say, I just really appreciate the opportunity to go to the convention. As a school attorney, it's really hard to feel like an expert in anything because there are so many things that we need to be aware of. And I just am grateful for the expertise of WASB and their lawyers. So I always attend the legal updates that they provide and their legislative updates as well to know what to be prepared for. And one of the topics that you all know I'm very interested in is the vaccine and trying very hard to get our teachers vaccinated as soon as possible. And also looking at, there is a lot of advice coming out about whether or not you can mandate the vaccine, which most of us agree you cannot. But how do you incentivize it if you feel that staff will be reluctant? And there are some communities who have very reasonable perspectives of why to be wary of a vaccine and how you... So I was interested in those discussions about how you can incentivize it and how you can educate different communities that might be reluctant to have a vaccine because we know for the vaccine to be effective, the more people who have it, the more it helps all of us. So I did, and I've been working with Madison about how to help with communities of color who may be reluctant to have the vaccine. So I'm foreshadowing that because I may be coming to the board with further discussion about how to potentially incentivize the vaccine. So was really happy to participate in that. And then also did watch the First Amendment session that Krista and Troy referenced. And I will say just to forewarn all of you that I am presenting at the WASB Legal Updates in a couple of weeks about First Amendment issues when you do virtual education. Because I'm really proud of all the work we've done on our hate speech policy. And I do take the opportunity to talk about that because this isn't work that we do alone. And so I would like to give other districts comfort in how to navigate a policy because our kids have told us that's really important to them. So you may be getting questions about it because when we present on topics like that, they frequently email board members and ask about your experience. So I'm really looking forward to that and appreciate the opportunity to go to the convention.
Thanks, Gina. Anybody else? Okay. Hearing none? Thanks, everyone, for the report. Over the years, just a great source of information. I missed not going there this year live. I'm going to go back and catch some of those sessions that you guys have talked about. All right, that moves on to our opening school update, kind of our standard protocol now. So Dr. Bergstrom, the floor is yours.
Thank you. And now that I have the floor, I want to take a moment to say congratulations to Andrew Palmer because accept a Fulbright Scholarship to the Citadel is an amazing accomplishment. So I just want to say congratulations on that. That's really wonderful news.
Thank you.
And then I'll talk a little bit about what's happening in the school world. And you can see what the agenda for this evening looks like. We'll talk about the reopening plan update and then different action steps that we're taking as we're moving forward in our planning. So you've seen this many times. We'll keep bringing it back because it shows you where we started, where we are, and the fact that, yes, indeed, there are next steps, right? Now, this was the first day for seven through 12. Half of them attended today, half will attend tomorrow. It was really exciting. I was at the middle school, and I was just amazed at the planning at the middle school staff lab to make sure the day went well. Several of us were there helping. And with the buses coming in, the parents coming in, and the students all going to different doors based on their first-hour class, but then to go inside and to see how the school had been arranged so that students knew where to go, where to walk. And there was probably an adult every 10 feet along the way. So there really is no way that a student could have walked in and not understood where to go or what to do because there were so many adults strategically placed and so excited to see the kids. So it was a, it was a great morning to see all of that. So, as I said, we were back. And here are some pictures from this morning already. You know that Mr. Plainer and Dr. Anderson are always ready with their camera. And so there's never any shortage of photos in the middle school and the high school. They are sharing photos with us all the time. And you can see some of the things that are in place right now to make sure kids know what to do. You can see how they are spaced out in the classroom. And I also have to say at the middle school, there were a typical number of students who walked into school today wearing only sweatshirts. That always amazes me about middle school is how many of them only wear a sweatshirt, no matter how old it is. I'll be at the high school tomorrow, and I'm excited for that, too. Now, as we are transitioning our students back to more in-person instruction, it's a really exciting time, but it is a time that requires a lot of adjustments on the part of our students, first and foremost, but also on our staff. So at the medical working group last week, we spoke to them. They told us very much about the importance of transition and ensuring we're supporting our students through this transition period. And so we shared with them the journey that RCI took in preparing the fifth and sixth graders to come back. And it was really such an impactful, five, 10 minutes of our time in the medical work group, that I asked RCI Principal Cindy Olander to come in tonight again and just talk a little bit about what RCI did to prepare our students to be back in school. Because they did some really great things. And I think it's important that we all understand what has been done to set the foundation for a really positive return. So Ms. Olander, I was wondering if you'd like to get started now? And you can tell me when you want me to move the slides.
Yeah, you can go to the next slide, and thank you for having me tonight. First of all, I just want to say that the RCI team is an amazing place. We all work together and we support each other. So when I got together with the team, when I say the team, I'm talking about student services, all the administrators here, and our teachers, to really talk about how we got ready to come back to school, we had to start from the very beginning of our journey. So from the very beginning at RCI, and like our other schools in the district, we really focused on SEL. So we intentionally built like a social emotional learning session every single day for our students and teachers to engage in. So our lessons could be anywhere from practicing a mindful minute in order to calm and feel good about themselves. We talked about second step curriculum, about gaining confidence, setting goals, decision-making. We worked on equity, building relationship, and just having fun with each other. So that was something we built from the very beginning. When we started in the fall, we were all virtual, and our students really reached out and said, we need more interaction. We need more time just to be kids virtually. So we listened to what they said, and we created clubs for them. So we had All About Us Club, Yoga Club, Dance Club, you name it. I'm pretty sure we have some sort of club at RCI where our staff just volunteer their time to support the students and engaging in fun activities. We also started a daily lunch bunch where students can get together with different students and different teams so that they could eat and have fun. Student Services and Administration, also at RCI, we'd have weekly team meetings where we focused on mental health and also academic concerns, where we talk about individual students and help create success plans for them. Some of those plans included using our school counseling support systems. And we also use our mentorship program, which we have right around, I think, 23 students, a couple outside of RCI, which is a great program where the student is connected to another adult in the community and gets to spend one hour a week with them, give or take, virtually or in person. So, and also at RCI, we created learning hubs, support hubs. And they just weren't focused on academics, but we also supported students who had mental health concerns that needed to come in, have that connection and support. So from the very beginning, that's what we did at RCI. So when we thought about preparing for in-person, we started to talk to our students and really asked, what do you need in order to feel comfortable? And those conversations were amazing. And I think they were amazing because we spent so much time developing relationships with them. They were, they were nervous to come in. Some students had never been in our building, and we were welcoming fifth-grade students that have never been in the same class with other students from Brooklyn, Netherwood, or Prairie View. So it was a huge transition, even though there was a high level of comfort in the virtual land. We knew we had to face some, some challenges coming back together. So when we did this, we asked them what they wanted to see, and they wanted to see virtual tours. So we took videos of the whole entire school and shared them with students. And we also brought students in who had a little more need and wanted to be in the building. We did week-long PBIS lessons during our SEL time. So we really broke it down, like, looking at what is social, safe social distancing? What does it mean to wear a mask correctly? How do you take a drink of water? What if you have to go to the bathroom? What door do I walk in? I know these seem like really, really silly ideas, but when you're in school, you're taught over and over again to enter one door. You never walk around the back. So we had to do a lot of teaching with students and staff about how to unbreak all those rules that we've used for so long. We talked about what does it look like to ride a bus? What does your school day look like? What if you come? What door do you come in? And we talked about what supplies. And we really had a lot of students participate in the videos as well. So that was really meaningful, and students had a lot of time to engage in conversation and learn from each other. When they came to school, we have adults all over, every single door. They're outside welcoming, greeting, they're in the hallways. We have supervision from paraprofessionals also helping out because when they came back in, there was a level of nervousness. They were a little nervous because some students had not been engaging with... They were a little nervous because some students had not been engaging with other peers. So we had to really take it slow and meet them where they were at. We have mental health support groups that meet virtually and also in person. And we focused on also our staff wellbeing. So as much as we wanted to give our students the support, we also knew our staff was transitioning to a new level of instruction. So we create a lot of different opportunities where staff members could engage in questions, problem solve together, work as a team to dive deeper into issues. We did mix it up lunches for the staff. And also as much as that SEL time was helpful for students, what was really meaningful is two staff members are paired together and they work together and develop a deeper relationship. And so that also supported them in the transition. And then as we're growing, we're now in week number four. So some things we're thinking about continually, like what if a student didn't eat before cohort? Because some of them were really, really quiet at the beginning, but now they're like, ah, I forgot lunch! Or breakfast, what do I do? So we're working around that and letting them know, it's okay, we all forget things. We'll work together. We're really looking at how we can get more movement for our students. Sometimes it's a little hard when it's super cold outside. We're in the process of recreating our learning hub. So if we do have a student who has more needs than their cohort time allows them, or a virtual student that we could offer them supports. Like I mentioned before, we also have mental health support groups up and going. And now we're also creating virtual support groups for students that are at home. So an example of what that could look like is if students in the morning at RCI and they're at home in the afternoon and they have asynchronous work and their teacher is unavailable because they're instructing the PM cohort. We now have teams of people that are positioned around the building that the students know and that can log into a Google Classroom and have live instruction and meets and ask those kind of questions. So they're never without the support that they need to be successful. Next slide. Students are happy, they're having fun, they feel comfortable, they're sharing, they're starting. I'd say by week number two, they were, you know, they're coming in, listening to music, singing, dancing. And it's really great to see how well they're adjusting to this. And we really are just trying to meet students where they're at and be responsive. So that's just a little bit about RCI's story. And I do have to say our staff has been simply, simply amazing and caring for all of our students. So I didn't know if you had any questions that you would have at this time?
You can jump in now if you want. Yeah, Krista.
I just want to compliment Cindy and RCI from FOSTD. We've worked with you with the mentor program and now, I don't think Andrew mentioned, but working with some of the high school students and potentially having them join the clubs at RCI. I think it's just a perfect example of learning happens in all sorts of different forms. That it doesn't necessarily have to be sitting in the classroom with your teacher. There's ASR and it's synchronous. There's clubs that happen on Wednesdays. There's things. So I just really compliment you and your team. And it's happening in every building across the district and we just happened to see you tonight. But it's really exciting what learning looks like in the Oregon School District right now. We're being pretty darn innovative.
Any other questions for Cindy? Anna?
Not a question, but another compliment. I would just say, you know, how great is it, all the supports that you're mentioning? It's just, it just is incredible to know that if students are having a difficult time, that you've now got a virtual group that's available for students to join in Google Meet and get the support they need at the time that they might be needing it. So just kudos to you, kudos to your team on being so creative, being so thoughtful, being so focused on helping all of the students navigate this situation. And it's just incredible. It's just, it's awesome. And this was a great example to show us really all the hard work that is going into this to support the students and I. It's just, it's really impressive. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I would just add, great job Cindy. And one thing that really resonated with me was when you talked about those times when students are, there's classroom teachers unavailable and they need someone to do the job to. And how now that we're in person, you've been able to establish those relationships. And just to test them into how well I think you're doing the hybrid model and developing those relationships during the time that the students are in school. Very valuable to the virtual environment. I think it also really helps our staff because as we all know, they're stressed pretty thin with teaching in person and virtual. Great job.
Thank you. Thanks Cindy.
Thank you Cindy. RCI was the first school that welcomed back everybody at the same time. And so we thought it would be good to highlight how they handled that transition. Although it is representative of what's happening at all the schools and all the levels. So now on to the rest of it. So we spoke about this last time, what will be the key decision-making criteria in either moving back temporarily to online or moving to the next step of Phase Restart? So we would only move temporarily to online if we had cases of transmission within the building. We had too many staff members who were not available to teach. Probably that would be a quarantine-related issue. Or if there was changing health guidance. So we're not anticipating any of that. We're anticipating moving forward, moving forward very positively. So what will be our next step? Well, a lot of that will be on the consistently changing health guidance. Because as you know, as we learn more about the virus, the health guidance then changes too and we have to be able to react. And a great example was what happened today, right? It was new guidance was issued at 11:04. And I would say that we were texting by about 11:06 and Mike was in a meeting by 11:24. So there you go. That's just, we have to be responsive to any changing health guidance. Of course, the impact of the vaccine. And we're always monitoring the effectiveness of the model that we are in. And we'll talk a little bit more about that later tonight. And also, we're consistently monitoring what's happening in our community. That was definitely a message from the medical working group. That everything we're doing is great, but don't lose track of what is happening with the virus within your area. So of course, we're looking at the public health data that's coming out on a weekly basis. Here's an example. The news is really very good. I believe we're down to 118 as the 14-day average. And remember, there was a time when we were in the hundreds, like it was almost 400 something at one time. So things are significantly improving and we all hope that it continues in that trajectory. So a vaccination update, this has been very important to everyone. Our Tier 1A staff, that is complete. We're very happy to say that all of our staff who qualified to be in Tier 1A have now received their first and many have received their second vaccination. The majority of our staff members are in Tier 1B. And you know from the news that Department of Health Services is anticipating that will start after March 1st. And we are being told consistently that this is an issue of supply. That there are simply a lot of people who are in Tier 1A, 65 and older, for example, who are still waiting and they will keep waiting. And it's something about public health has to determine that they have met a sufficient number of vaccinations in the tier above before they work to the next tier. So we're hoping that it's March 1st. And certainly Gina's advocacy is helping us, but we don't know exactly. We just know it's possible after March 1st. Is there anything you want to add to that, Ms. Jones?
Just that if you have the opportunity to talk to anyone influential, that the sooner we can do this, the better. Which I'm trying to feel grateful for March. But as I've been talking with folks, to have our teachers fully vaccinated by summer, isn't that helpful for our students this school year? And to me, every day does matter. And I just want the community to know that we are pushing every meeting that we're in and Dr. Bergstrom as well, to get started as soon as we possibly can. I would, I would start tomorrow if I could. So every day really does matter in terms of this school year.
Thank you. And weekly, we have a standing meeting at 11:15 on Fridays to update the dashboard. And you will see that currently, we're doing rather well. There are, positive cases would be under five, that's why you see an asterisk. Six staff in quarantine, 30 students in quarantine. So the numbers are also trending positively within the district. And then of course, how do we make sure that now that we are in school, we stay in school? And you've seen this before, so I won't go through the whole thing. But what I do want to underscore is the Panther pledge. Because we're doing quite a bit to ensure that the word is out on the fact that you really do need to monitor your symptoms every single day and stay home when you're exhibiting the symptoms that are a part of Part 1 or Part 2 on the Panther pledge. So people will be either receiving via mail or if you have a younger student through the backpack mail, an actual copy of the Panther pledge, so you can put it somewhere where you see it frequently. In addition to that, we have stickers that you can see, take the Panther pledge in Spanish and in English. And it's meant to be put somewhere where you will be reminded of the importance of doing this on a daily basis. I have mine on my computer. I would say if my kids were still at home, I would probably have it on the door that led out to the car. So that every day I saw it as I was taking the kids out, remind myself to stop and make sure the kids felt well enough to go. It's definitely a part of our social media campaign. I believe we have several different post-outs on it already. We have a video series that is really exciting. It started with one of our nurses, Arina Bultner. And then Friday night, we kicked off the students' video series. A lot of our students have made videos with sophomore Nate Majewski. His, it was just an excellent video, reminding his peers the importance of taking this seriously. So if you have not had the chance to find that on social media yet, you should go take a look at that because he did an outstanding job. We also have it on our website and we sent it out via email. So we have multiple ways of ensuring the Panther pledge is getting out to all members of our community. Because it's one of the most important things we can do to ensure that we now stay in school. And another reminder, you've seen this before too, that our school district has about 74% of our students in Phase Restart and about 26% in Oregon Online. But you see those numbers really change quite significantly when we break it down by demographic group. And we really want to understand a little bit behind, we want to understand the story behind those numbers. Why are people making the choices we're making? Because if we better understand that, we can act on it to become an even more responsive system. So what we are doing right now is we're doing something called informative interviews, which are really just really nice conversations with our families. They're being conducted mostly by the principals, but sometimes by Student Services team members too. We've done 56 interviews to date. And what we're finding is people are making choices for a wide variety of circumstances. And it's very difficult at this point to pull out trends because every family's circumstance is unique. There are even some families who are making decisions based per child. So some of their children are in Phase Restart and some are in Oregon Online because it better meets the needs of the children involved. But what is common is there are a high, a high number of the people are talking about just general concerns about the pandemic and not feeling safe or not wanting to send their children back until there's a vaccine or very strong feelings about that. A lot of people made their choices because they have someone in the family with a higher risk. So they wanted to be able to ensure they were making choices that protected the family members who were more at risk for the virus. Sometimes it was logistics that dictated or that dictated their choice. And sometimes the students felt like they were doing better online. And there were a few comments about there being just less drama if you're online and people were able to better focus on their academics. So it was all very unique to the family and to the student. We'll continue with our interviews. We're continuing to identify themes. And we'll be acting upon those because I said, we want to be responsive to what our families tell us. So we know that our education model, we have grades seven through 12 in our flipped model. Our K6s have specific Oregon Online classes and Phase Restart classes, different teachers, different scenario. But seven, 12 is choosing flipped. And I know that until you are a student who has experienced it, it's going to be a little difficult to describe it. So I talked to Mr. Pliner and asked him, who would be a really great team of teachers for me to approach about making a video regarding how flipped works? Because I think we all want to know a little bit more about what it will look and feel like. And right away, he recommended the English 10 team of Janet Fanry and Ellie Hirkus. And so I approached them and they were so excited to share with you what it is they do. So, okay, so Katie and I have been practicing this and we're hoping that this works. And if it doesn't, Katie's the best.
I have it queued up.
She's ready. She's ready. So we're gonna see.
Hi, Hirkus. And I teach English 10 at the high school.
And my name is Janet Fanry. I also teach English 10 at the high school. And we've been asked to explain to you what our hybrid model will look like when students are back in session, starting on February 8th today. So one of our overall goals when we were planning our school year this year and then also planning our re-phase start is that we wanted to make sure that all the students, online, in-person, synchronous people all had the same information, the same organization. We wanted to make sure they had the same method of delivery and also like the same rigor. And we had a secondary goal that we wanted to make sure that students had as many resources as possible at their disposal at any time of the day that they wanted to check. And we obtained this through numerous different facets. So Ellie is going to talk about the first way we obtained this.
Alright, so we're sharing our calendar. We actually have three different calendars, one for each cohort, Group A, Group B, and our Oregon Online students. And the purpose of this calendar is to be a one-stop shop for everything. Like Janet said, they have resources at their disposal and you know, they can click to find their assignments on this calendar as well as Google Classroom. So like I said, each group has the same curriculum on a calendar and it's tailored to what days they are synchronous in-person and synchronous. So each day will look a little bit different for each cohort based on when they are doing asynchronous work versus in-person with us or just completely virtual. The calendar, like I said, is a one-stop shop for everything they need. And all the links will be live and accessible once we are ready for the week ahead. Do I need to add anything about that?
I don't think so.
Okay. Office hours also, there'll be a link at the end so they can find us easily.
And these weekly calendars are also available on every single Google Classroom. It's at the top of the Google Classroom for both myself and Ellie's classes. They're in our classroom resources, so it's very easy to find. So with that, we also, for our asynchronous day, have a unit slideshow. And within this unit slideshow, this is located again in their Google Classroom. We have the key learning targets for what the students are going to be learning, a table of contents. And then we have our asynchronous lessons. So with the asynchronous lessons, it tells them what you need to be doing today. It has all of the connections for any videos they need to watch and any new teaching material. It explains any projects that they need. And this is again, at their disposal at any time in their Google Classroom. And we also explain any in-class activities, just in case they forgot what they did in class. That is also available in this unit slideshow for them. After that, we move into another way that we obtained this sameness within all of our classes is our in-person days. So any student before their in-person day will have an asynchronous lesson where they watch a video explanation, they have a teaching lesson, lecture. And it will tell them to come prepared to class to do things for this. As you can see at the bottom of the one in front of you, it says, come prepared to class. So that in-person days, we practice the skill they learned on the asynchronous days. And all classes will And all classes will have this. In-person classes, we will be right with them, giving them immediate feedback on the skills that they learned. And then our synchronous classes are online-only classes. This will be done, of course, through Google Meets. And it will be dual, it'll have a little bit more structure because we'll schedule individual times with students or small group times with students. So they get a little bit more one-on-one time with the teacher. So those are two ways that we are looking at how to make sure everything is the same. And then Ellie's going to talk about our last two ways to obtain our general goals.
Janet talked about group work for students. We work hard at building class community work groups and putting students in group work, in groups that they would like to work with, with kind of their own PLC communities. So they know who to rely on for curriculum and outside of class work. But rather than random people all the time, these kind of student PLCs offer the ability to have a safe space and opportunity to build rapport as well as unity with each other. So what we've done is given students the opportunity to choose groups within their own group, Group A, for example, and then to choose students they would like to work with in the other group, Group B, so that we can actually have two different groups. We can have in-person groups then working together or even bridging the gap from being in class to working with people at home. So we can build groups that way to building, once again, synchronous and asynchronous work. So they get the opportunity to build their own kind of community and to build trust with each other. Those groups stay the same. And we try to do separate at times as much durability for honor students versus the general students since we do have honors embedded within our classes. But sometimes it's a mixed group, which is a really great way for kind of leveling within groups. And then the last thing we do is a weekly checkout. And it's just, it's a great way for every student to see what they should do during the week, regardless of their, whether they're Group A, Group B, or you know, cohort online. There's follow-up questions about assignments, an opportunity for Janet and me to check for understanding, a checklist of all the things they should have done by that point on Friday at the end of the week. There's always an opportunity for them to ask questions and to provide feedback. So those, those weekly checkouts have become a staple in our virtual learning and will continue to be once we are back in school as well.
It's our way to take the pulse of our classes since we can't see their faces and their faithful expressions. All right, thank you very much. If you have any questions, please let us know.
Thank you.
I believe, there we go. Get back. So you can tell that there's a high level of collaboration between the teachers. We create the learning experiences that are customized for each of the cohorts, but also have a high level of continuity. So that you're receiving the same learning experience if you're in Oregon Online or if you're in Cohort A or you're in Cohort B. And even offering opportunities for the students in those cohorts to collaborate. So when we think about that and we wonder, all right, how well is this working? Right? Because we're trying to make sure that we are continuously monitoring. We are examining student data. So what we have here for you is the average GPA by grade for semester one of 2021 and then back an additional four years. Now, it's important to remember that when you're looking at five years of ninth graders, those are five separate groups of students, right? You're not looking at the same group five times over. But you can also see through the green that we are able to track the GPA by cohort. And you can see that we're staying overall very consistent with where we, there's variation across all five years. And the grades that we're seeing for semester one of this year are within what appear to be a normal variation. And it's also important to note that semester one for 2020 to 2021 are just the one, the semester we just closed. For many students, because of the block schedule, that is really their semester two grade. Because they've already been through semester one during what would typically be quarter one. So it's not perfectly comparable, but I think it's one piece of data to examine as we're keeping track of how well our students are achieving academically in addition to how well they're doing socially, emotionally. This piece is really the number of students by grade who have received more and more non-casting grades. So if we look at that, we can see freshmen, for example. There is a range, right, that goes from 2016 to 17 all the way to 2020, 21. So it's within, you know, a couple of percentage points of one another. You'll see the same for every grade. It's fairly consistent across, across time. So it's one way we're monitoring academically. We're also monitoring at the elementary schools, things like reading levels, math proficiency levels, et cetera. The middle school, because they're not doing letter grades, we're looking more at standards proficiency. Comparing one semester, our semester last year to a semester this year, as an example. And what we're noticing is that we are staying really, really close to trend. And we'll share a little bit of elementary data with you in the future. So for mental health, just want to make sure that we're continuously putting this issue at the forefront. Because even next year, when people talk about how to get kids caught up, I think one of the most important things we can do for our students next year is ensure that we are providing an adequate level of social, emotional, and mental health supports. That is one of the most important things we can do to prepare for next year. And the mental health committee has a meeting this week to begin planning for next year and what we'll need. But for now, we know that we have an increase in in-person supports. We're working with Oregon Mental Health to offer in-person counseling services through Oregon Mental Health. For some students, virtual is working very well. For some students, going to their office is working very well. But we want to be able to have another option for the students who want to be able to meet within the school. And as I mentioned, our mental health committee is meeting this week, is beginning the planning process. We're also really excited to begin looking at the Dan Coney Youth Survey. Because you know that that data comes out every three years and is really influential in our planning process. And we should be able to have that info before we bring a staffing proposal to you. Because you know that plays a big part. As far as action steps, how are we looking ahead? Quarter four instruction, we're talking about what might look different, what my next step might be. So we're looking at quarter four certainly. We're also looking ahead to some of our very traditional events and celebrations such as prom and graduation. And what might that look like? And we know that if we continue with this positive trend, what is allowable now, much more might be allowable in two months. So we're planning for multiple options and hope that things continue to improve, which would allow us to have more traditional celebrations. And that's really what we're hoping for. We also have planning committees ready for summer schools. Because we think that that's yet another option to help our students continue to maintain skills. But I also want to say, a couple of years ago, particularly for the younger students, we made a big shift in summer school to really crafting experiences that emphasized loving the learning and enjoying the experience and not just making sure that they go over everything they weren't able to do well during the school year. Instead, we just want to craft something where it makes them feel great about school and they have a fun time and they're also reading and doing math and science without even necessarily knowing that they are. So we'll probably be moving forward with that type of approach while also maintaining some courses that are there for the students who need additional support. And then, of course, we're planning for the fall. And we absolutely believe that we'll be back to normal in the fall. But we also know that there are circumstances sometimes that come out of the blue. But right now, that is our plan, that we'll be back to five days a week of instruction in the fall. I'll move to the medical working group update. Just last week, we met with them again. Wonderful group of professionals that are always willing to help us see things from a different perspective and offer their professional expertise to really check over what we're doing and ensure we're not missing something that's critical. They also really place a lot of emphasis on mental, mental health and wellness. And they're giving us a lot of advice in that area too. So at the last meeting, we asked them to review and give feedback on the transition plans for grade 3 through 6 and on the Panther pledge, which our information was requested by one of our members to share with other communities who were trying to do the same thing. So we're very glad that we're able to, to help out other people who are enjoying our students and stay in school also. Equity update. You saw this slide at the last board meeting, all of the different things that are happening in the 2021 school year. Because even though we've had to make a lot of shifts in our educational model, what's important to us has not changed. And we have found ways to continue to work toward creating a more equitable educational environment for all of our students. And you see on this page, all of the different things. It's never one thing. It's always many things, working in alignment toward a common goal. So one example that's really fun, which I guess would be very much related to the curriculum aspect, where we have here, advancing curriculum to promote equity, honor cultural diversity, and eliminate institutional biases. Part of that is the celebration of Black History Month. While we definitely think that inclusive curriculum should be throughout the entire school year and not relegated to one month a year, we also know that it's really important to pay some special attention during this time period because it's important that students know that this is important to us. So what are some of the things that are happening? Well, in K4, there are a lot of PDS videos and book readings by black authors. And by grades 5 through 6, we have daily announcements that focus on the accomplishment of black people, such as, you see Nate Jamison here in the corner. And the students are the ones doing these announcements. And in grades nine through 12, they're doing a lot of mini lessons written by the Multicultural Student Union on topics of famous people, economics, culture, and current events. What's really exciting about that is that students are planning the lessons. We have a lot of students who are really invested in ensuring that we are continuously looking at our learning experiences with an inclusive lens. And it's exciting to know that our students are invested too. So a lot of things happening to honor black culture this month. And another way to honor our young students. Oh, there we go. Many of you may know already, but we had a lot of our Oregon School District students who were honored at the 2021 Martin Luther King Outstanding Young Person Awards celebration. We submit the names of students to be honored every year. This year, it was a virtual celebration, but it was just as meaningful. And what students were able to accomplish and what they were representing was just as meaningful. So you see here, we have several students who received an award. Hannah Council, Evelyn Espino Sabrito, Trinity Gardner, Jaclyn Jenkins, Jack Khalil, Cameron Purbinow, Tene O'Malley, Jada Opari Ado, and Jordana Solinsky. So all of those young people were honored at the breakfast. And I have attended those before and they are uplifting experiences. And I think that is the end of the school reopening update, the medical working group update, and the uplifting update.
Thanks, Dr. Bergstrom. Questions or comments? I'll start with Calvin.
Wow, that was a lot of information. Thanks so much, Leslie, for all the preparation. A lot of good things happened. Great to see, I'm sure there was some smiling faces under those masks that Mrs. Olander was showing in the RCI classroom. So great to see the kids back and great that we got started today as well. Since you have the slide up, I'm curious, you wouldn't have to point out a particular person, but could you give an example of how they would have received such a great honor? What specifically? Like, I'm just curious with MLK Outstanding Young Person Award.
It depends. There are all kinds of different awards underneath that umbrella. But it either has to do with academic achievement or community service or service to school, those types of categories.
Great. Okay. Let me just see, I got some notes here. So the one thing I wanted to ask is about summer school. And you know, I've seen some of the curriculum over the last few years and definitely see the shift towards, you know, what you mentioned about, you know, being fun and having people, the kids kind of learn without knowing they're learning on important topics and gaps in their education. So that's really great to see. Are you getting any early indications about increased interest in summer school? And do we have the staffing to handle it, I guess, first question? And second question, which also might make summer school more attractive, is will there be more virtual options in summer school?
We're in the initial planning stages for what we will offer in summer school. But we know that the courses we'll offer, we're planning on, are they, are we able to do them in person? Are we able to do them virtually so that we know we have the option depending on where we're at and what people want or need? We are anticipating that our families will be, will be interested, particularly if we're able to offer quite a few in-person options, which is of course our goal. I think I've read a lot of articles that are coming out from across the nation, not just Oregon, where everyone's a little concerned about who's going to teach summer school. Because our teachers have been
Absolutely.
so overwhelmed with the things they've had to accomplish this year. We haven't asked our teachers yet. Our teachers have been amazing about teaching summer school. I have no indication that this year will be different, but I know that that's a national conversation.
Yeah, this year more than any years. Teachers are going to need a break for sure. So that's one of the reasons I asked about the staffing concerns. And I would hope and think that there'd be more interest considering, you know, that parents might want to cover potential gaps or, you know, not have that summer slump with, you know, the type of learning that has had to occur for several quarters now, so. Great. Well, I'll leave, leave it to my colleagues to ask additional questions. But again, great, great presentation. I really enjoyed too, the real-life example. Not really into poetry, but a good example of how the flip schedule is working. So I think it was really, be really helpful for parents and was helpful for me. So thank you for going through that, that step.
Thanks, Calvin. Tim?
There's a lot, there's a lot going on. And it seems like so much has taken place just since we last got together. I can really feel the traction. I can feel the traction of kids getting back and that transition happening. We talked about it in the medical working group, how important managing that transition was going to be. Simple things like communication, how people have learned to or learned not to communicate over the last quite a number of months. So it's exciting to me to feel that traction. When I first came in the doors, Jim was sitting outside and he said, "Tim, I think I had the best day in the last 11 months today." He was so excited about having kids in school. He mentioned that he kind of tracks his activity. And I know Jim makes his way around this school just by habit. But he said he put five miles on today, walking the hallways and seeing people. So I'm just really excited about all that you've done to prepare for this day. The team has done to prepare for this day and it's exciting to see it paying off.
Krista?
Just have a couple of quick questions. One, I guess, is for Gina, lovely about vaccine distribution for our teachers. Is that something that would, we would work through a healthcare provider and our teachers would go to that provider or would happen here? How's that gonna work?
Gina, I'll let you correct me, but first, we are signed up through UW Health. They are our vaccinator. We are aligned to them. And because of the nature of the vaccine having to be kept so cold, that we'll probably have to go to them as opposed to having a clinic here on site that would allow us to move through it in one day, as an example.
And would it be like all the same day or, I know, because like the second vaccine, people tend to get sick?
Yes. Well, we've been talking about that and honestly, we'll take it however there will be. Well, we've been talking about that, and honestly, we'll take it however they're willing to give it. So we're not going to be extraordinarily picky on when it happens. However, if we do have the luxury of signing the second dose, then we'd like to be able to perhaps have an asynchronous day and try to get it all done in one day, perhaps a Friday, so that we don't have to close down school because we don't have enough teachers. Because they said anticipate between 10% to 15% of people being too ill to work the day after their second vaccination, and 15% of our teachers not able to work would cause a problem. So if we're able to be, if we have the opportunity to be proactive when that happens, then we've already thought that through.
My next question, and I don't really know how to ask this, but I would love for you to answer the question, you know, I think Andrew referenced it in terms of his time in class, or we've heard it from other parents, that, and the video was great with the English department, but I think, and looking at this into the future, because this type of learning in our district is not new, just since we've been in COVID. But we do learning, you do it even when we're in class, we do synchronous and asynchronous. And so can you address the question about, we only have so many hours that our kids are going to school a week, and I guess answer that question about learning is occurring in different ways, and that's not new to this district?
Absolutely. The flipped classroom concept is something that's been utilized at multiple levels for several years now. We've had a flipped classroom science class at different levels for a long time, and it's really the idea of what students are able to do independently, they do independently, and then when they're in person, that's when they're able to get either small group or individual attention from the teacher, and that's when they're able to do the higher level thinking skills of synthesizing and processing the information. It isn't new, but it's been utilized to a much heavier degree in this particular model. And what we do in class is going to be extraordinarily important, because that's when you're helping kids take information to that next higher level of understanding through the direct guidance of the teacher. But I also know that we'll probably start off a little bit slow, because they're doing a little bit to create classroom culture also, and that's very important, too. A lot of our students haven't been together in a room with other students in months. So if it does seem slow in the beginning, that's probably because they're taking time to establish some cultural norms for how we work together.
So it would be fair to say that this week may be a little less asynchronous to get the kids that are in class on that day some learning. So I guess, you know, Sean is in biology, and so he had an open house night with Peter Crich, where Peter Crich did a video for us that explained, here's what the first week is going to look like, and so I guess maybe that makes me feel a little bit more informed, but I see some people talking already about, well, this week isn't going so well, but it's a lot of that getting started and learning will occur, so thank you for that explanation.
I think there's going to be some go slow, go fast.
Okay, thank you. And then I guess my final comment has to do with equity. I thought it was really powerful to listen to the students that came here tonight, and so a lot of times, we deal equity in policy and procedures, but it's really about kids and their experiences, and I think we heard tonight, in a very personal way, some of the experiences of our kids in our district. And so I guess I would like to have us think as a board, that at every board meeting, do we have some sort of centering that lets us know what kids are experiencing from a personal level, which then impacts us from a policy level? I just thought that was very, very powerful tonight, that put us in a place of, this is what our kids think, and what they hear, and what they see, and how they feel.
It's always about the individual, right? And how the individual can be positively impacted, and that's individuals from any background, because our work in equity is about all of our students, and preparing all of our students to be active, compassionate, empathetic citizens in a much more global world. So this is critical for all of our kids.
That's it for me.
Thanks, Krista. Troy?
Great to see you, Miss Vander, and Miss Perkis on the video. My son really enjoyed Miss Perkis's 10th grade, or yeah, 10th grading with his class, one of his all-time favorite classes, so great to see them, great job of demonstrating the flipped model. And thanks, Leslie, for sharing the academic data, as we're monitoring that data. You know, data is so integral to everything that we do here, and I know that all of our educators are always evaluating the data. It's not anything new, and I know that we have the ability to dissect that data, you know, Mr. Tanner has the ability to do deep dives into data and look at it any, you know, any which way that we can, and we, you know, we always are doing that. So I guess my question is, what are we doing, or what have we been doing differently in monitoring that data? Because what you provided tonight is just end-of-the-semester data, but that analysis of data is happening all the time, it's happening every day, right? So what are one or two things that we've had to do differently in the first month?
Well, that is opening up an amazing conversation that a lot of us have been having lately, and that is, we started the year, our plan for the year was to have this be a year where we were really utilizing professional learning communities model through Corwin. It's the four PLC questions, which you've heard us discuss. What do we want students to know? How do we know that they know it? How do we know when they already know it, and we need to keep moving? And then what do they need to know next? And then also, the next question is, who benefited and who did not? That's adding the equity layer to the PLC. So we had expensive training plans and implementation plans, and of course, then you get things like the pandemic, and things don't go exactly as you had planned. However, because of all that ground, groundlaying work, PLCs did move forward, and as a matter of fact, they've become an absolute crux in how we have monitored students' progress as we move throughout the school year, is because we do have time set aside for our teachers to get together in teams, to collectively examine that common formative assessment data, and to make decisions about what needs to happen next for each individual student. So we thought this was going to be a year where we would stall, and in many ways, the pandemic has been an accelerator on that PLC model, because it's how you make sure that you know what every student needs, even when they're not five feet in front of you, but they're on the screen. So that is really how we, that's the structure we use to continuously monitor the data around our students, and we know the big, the big data, and this board has been a part of this for as long as I can remember, the big data is not the standardized testing. The data is how are students performing against grade-level standards within the classroom on a daily basis? How are we measuring that, and what decisions are we making based on the data that's in front of us? So in reality, I think that this really unfortunate circumstance has actually helped us get stronger PLCs.
Great. Thank you. Anna?
I really don't have any questions, but I do very much appreciate the example of what the flipped model looks like. I think that was really helpful, not only for myself, but hopefully anyone who's chiming, you know, listening in, but I really appreciate the concept of the consistent learning or the educational model, as far as the online students are getting the same instruction that our in-person students are receiving. That, to me, is an equity issue. That is allowing the same level of education regardless of the format that you selected. And I really commend our district for prioritizing that and doing that for all of the students in our school, and I know it's a huge lift for our teachers to learn that model and to develop that curriculum in that manner, but I just think it was the way, the right way to do this, to provide that consistent educational model for all of our students regardless of their methods. So I just think it's, I hope that we learn as we implement this going forward, that this is really a great strategy, and that we are going to see this be successful. So thank you.
If you go back a bunch of years and look at some of our older papers, you'll see a consideration that student achievement is driven by four things. That would be curriculum, how it's delivered, how it's assessed, and then factors outside of the district that may impair that, okay? And we spent a long time as a district moving towards a standard-based curriculum models, invested a lot of money, and we got there and have moved toward looking at delivering assessment, and the pandemic kind of hit, all right? And where we're really seeing a lot of work is, because we've had curriculum in place from a standardized standpoint, we're now doing a lot of intentionalized looking at how we deliver it, because we've had to because of the pandemic, and I think we're learning how to learn, you know? And we've always done that, but because of the pandemic, what we saw tonight in terms of the flipped classroom and how teachers are approaching learning has really been eye-opening. Assessment's the same way. You know, we've talked a lot about assessment over the years, but this year's made us focus on that even more, just because we've been so unusual in how, and because we don't have standardized assessments, which we as a board and district have said aren't the be-all and all, and to all of how we measure student achievement in this district, but they're not there, so that makes us focus more on our internal standardized look at that, and it was really, really good to see and hear you talk about how we're doing that. I think we'll need to look more at that, you know, in the next couple of months, to see whether there are any gaps in terms of assessment. And then with the external stuff, we had been working for the last couple of years on investing a lot into those social-emotional learning and mental health stuff, because we knew that that was a significant impact on that, and the focus on that through the pandemic has also reinforced what we've been doing in the past. So what you're seeing is really significant work through the pandemic on those areas that drive student achievement. And one thing I'd like to end with in terms of assessment is, you know, we can assess what we normally have looked at in terms of student achievement and meeting standards and that, but our kids are learning a lot more this year than just curriculum stuff. They're learning how to function in a whole new world, in brand-new circumstances, having to be independent more in their learning, how to learn in adverse situations. A lot of those soft skills that we go look at, you know, the visioning for the future paper that was talked about, how are you going to be successful in this world? It wasn't necessarily getting a 4.0 or a great standardized test score, it's how you can function in this world with soft skills, and that's, that our kids are learning this year, you know, just because of the adverse impact of the pandemic. So while we can look at grade point average and look at standardized stuff, one of the things we should forget is that our kids are learning a whole lot more than just what we typically measure and assess. And I think our staff, from our administration to our teaching staff, to our peer professionals, are learning a lot about learning this year, and working really hard, and I know this board's really proud of them and all the work that's gone into that. Those really, these have been really good presentations, and I liked the fact that you included clips in terms of what is it really like in the classroom and what's going on, because I think that helps us understand it for the public that watches this, because there's a lot of stuff going on. So thank you. So have you done this report?
Yes, and I have just a couple of things, because I like to brag about our district, so here we go. February 1st through 5th, you probably all saw this, it was National School Counseling Week, and considering the emphasis that we have placed on students and their mental wellness, our counselors play a very, very large role in that, and they have been working very closely with our students throughout this entire time, and of course, moving forward. And so this was a post that we did through social media that had a lot of engagement, and it's probably because family members of our counselors shared it with their friends, and people were able to, you know, have a proud moment, knowing that their friend or relative was a school counselor who was doing really good work for the kids. So many thanks to our staff in that area. And then we also had some awards for artistic achievement. Milwaukee, or Wisconsin Scholastic Art Award is based on Milwaukee Art Museum, and it's based out of that, and it's the nation's longest-running, most prestigious recognition program. And isn't that exciting, because we had seniors from the high school who were recognized? We had Emma Dutcher was an honorable mention, as was Ethan McCurdy and Haley Puccillo, and then Lauren Stolman had two honorable mentions, one gold key and two silver keys for her submissions. And you see this painting on the screen here? This is her gold key painting called "Stormy Sea." So clearly, we have some very talented young people in our school district, and we have a couple of, we have concerts coming up in the music areas in the next two weeks, too, some really fun virtual concerts that many of us are attending, so I'll be excited to tell you next time how all of the concerts went. In addition, it's all the achievements that Mike shared earlier this evening from our athletes. And that is it.
Any questions for Leslie? All right, closing, future agenda, we're going to have something for policy, and then Leslie and I have got to confer about the rest of our agenda, we'll have this report as usual. Anything from the financial end next time?
Not right now, we're waiting for the state to start talking about the budget.
Yeah. The revenue numbers came in a little better.
They did?
So that was good.
We have a visioning meeting before our next meeting as well. There might be something.
Might be coming, so you just let me know if you've got something to get on the agenda, mostly. Okay. Check out. Kevin, anything on checkout?
No, the only thing I wanted to add was the, how great it was to see the game that the Varsity Boys Basketball Team won on the last second shot. It was just awesome to see them celebrating and so cool for all that they've gone through in the shortened season, and it seems like all the sports teams are doing a good job of keeping their word and remembering that it's a privilege that they're able to play in these times, and that, you know, we voted, we voted to allow them for that, and we put faith that they would comply, so I'm proud that we're seeing great compliance, and we're expecting the same out of the fall and spring athletes as well. But shout out to Ryan Panzer for his last second shot and seeing the team celebrate, that was really great.
Troy? Anna?
No, I think my only thing I would mention is that I'm looking forward to the community transition conversation that's coming up. So there's an upcoming meeting that really deals with how we can connect students with community members and employers within our, within our community, and so I'm really looking forward to that discussion and seeing how we can partner together on those things, and with the Chamber of Commerce as well. So I'd just really like to see those community partnerships, and I'm really excited to see those. So that's all I have.
Great, thanks. Andrew, congratulations again. Playing baseball this spring?
Yes, sir.
We got to get that snow to melt a little more.
Yeah, I've been in the cage a few times the past few weeks. Actually, I signed up to hit tonight, and then I forgot that I had to come to the meeting, so Thursday night, though, I will be back in there.
Okay. Tim?
Nothing.
Krista?
Two quick things. One, as clerk of the school board, just wanted to remind everybody that we have, a week from tomorrow is the primary election, and I know there's some confusion, but just a reminder, no matter where you live in the district, you can vote for every seat in the school board, so please vote in the primary on February 16th. And then second, FOSD works in partnership with RCI on the mentorship program, and so we do have a need for more mentors, and I know Steve is a mentor, and Tim is a mentor, and Leslie is a mentor, and so I really appreciate them doing that. It's a really meaningful program. It's not tutoring, it's one hour a week, spending time with kids in a really positive environment that means so much to them, so if anyone is interested in being a mentor, you can go to friendsofosd.com and fill out a short form, and we can match you up with a child.
I think Tim can vouch for it, it's the best hour of my week.
It is a great hour. Yes, it is.
Mine, too.
I had mine today, and last week, my student was, wasn't feeling well, and it really bummed me out, when I got an email from my contact at RCI saying-
And it really bummed me out when I got an email from my contact at RCI saying, "He's going to have to stay home today." It was disappointing to me. It was, it bummed me out, so I was happy to see him today.
We had kind of a funny moment because the kids were all home, and Scott came home from, you know, the new mentee. And so, he's like, "What did you do today with your mentee?" And he's like, "Well, we shot baskets, which Scott loves. We played catch, and then he's like, "And then we played tag." And so, the kids and I were dying laughing, "Our dad played tag with just one other kid."
Yeah, it's a really good program, and my mentee is someone who I worked with last year, and we liked the relationship so much that we continued this year, and I would hope that it continues.
So, thank you, guys, very much.
So, and I would encourage anybody who is interested and wants to make a positive impact, because you do, is to contact us. All right? And I don't have anything other than that, so I need a motion.
I'll move to a chair.
I'll second.
Can you call the roll?
Ms. Flanagan?
Yeah.
Mr. LeBrun?
Yes.
Mr. Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkfords?
Yes.
Ms. Beja?
Yes.
Mr. Zach?
Yes, we're adjourned at 9:01. Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.